Here we are at 7 o'clock. It is the Raytown Board of Aldermen meeting. It is January 20th, 2015, otherwise known as Regular Session Number 43. We're going to ask our friend Sue Klotz to deliver the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please. Welcome.
Pleasure to be here. Could you pray with me? Father God, we come to you today with thankful hearts for the sunshine, the beautiful weather, and for the privilege to meet here tonight. There are decisions to be made, other discussions to be shared here in this place. We ask for your guidance in all that we must do today to help shape and build our city. Guide those who are going to be leaving here to get safely to their destinations. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America into a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sweetie. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Josh Green?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Jason Green?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum. We will, I'd like it this time to ask Angela Roberts, and if she wants to bring her family forward, as well as Coach Claycow, come forward, please.
Yes, sir.
Want to tell us about that? Firstly, it is a pleasure, and one of our very own, to use athletic excellence. We're proud today to bring Angela Roberts forward with her family, and Coach Claycow. Proclamation. The City of Raytown is a proud supporter of Metropolitan Community College System, one of the premier college community colleges in the country, with a proud tradition of providing affordability, quality education, and improve the area's workforce and economic development. Metropolitan Community College Longview, Metropolitan Community College Longview Lakers Women's Volleyball Team competed in November and won the regional volleyball tournament at East Central College in Union, Missouri, captured the 2014 National Junior College Athletic Association Division II Region 16 crown, and then went to Division II National Championship Title on November 22nd at Phoenix College in Phoenix, Arizona, one of only 16 teams nationally to compete, one of our very own Raytown. Whereas over the past nine seasons, Metropolitan Community College Longview emerged as one of the premier programs in NJCAA, whereas Raytown's own Laker player, Angela Roberts, a sophomore, provided the middle hitter position, if you can talk about that, has brought pride to the city by being selected the 2014 All-Region First Team for skill, hard work, and determination. Lakers head coach Rob Claycow has won the 2014 Coach of the Year Award for Region 16, providing leadership and support to the team. All of the residents of Raytown, they are proud of all of the Lakers for their hard work, their impressive skills, and their fine sportsmanship, and especially you, young lady, for all that you've done in representing this city. I, David Bowery, do hereby proclaim today as a day of celebration for the success of Ms. Roberts, Coach Claycow, and the entire MCC Longview Lakers volleyball team on this 20th day of January in the year 2000. Congratulations. Here, get in here. That's what we got Randy, that's why we invited Randy.
(Laughter).
On behalf of MCC Longview, we appreciate this recognition, and especially want to point out the skills and talents of Angela. She's played at Longview for the last two years and has probably been the backbone of our team in terms of leadership, chemistry, and on-court and off-court presence, a great student, great work ethic, great attitude. So she's exemplified the kinds of values and skills that we're proud of, and we're grateful that she's been at Longview, and she'll be moving on to Ottawa to continue her volleyball career. And again, we wish her the best, and her family, and all that she's done for the school and the program. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm very honored and thankful for my city, or my town. I really, I came from Raytown South High School, so I'm very proud of my community, and I'm proud to represent my community with sports because I really love it, and I'm thankful for God and my family and everybody who supported me, and I plan to do more to represent Raytown and get out there some more.
Always an exciting time, and we can celebrate one of our very own. We're going to start with public comments now. We've got our, we have Janet Emerson.
I don't know how many of you attended the Martin Luther King Celebration on Sunday, but it was really wonderful. And Becky Bottoms here won first place in the essay contest, and I would like for her to take just a few things about what she wrote about.
I wrote about an African-American family, and they came here so they could plant, and the money made off of the plants, they would send to Kenya, Africa, to an orphanage, and every $50 made would give each child three meals a day for a month.
Tell them what happened when you wrote the essay.
And I wrote this essay because their garden, somebody, well, it was probably a group, they took four-wheelers and destroyed their garden. So I wrote this essay so the money that I got, $3,000, I would use to build a fence so that this occurrence wouldn't happen again.
She partly lives in Raytown. Her house, her bedroom is in Kansas City, but part of the house is in Raytown.
Well, claim her as ours.
Yes, and she has helped in the Raytown Farmers Market all of the last season. And also, I just wanted to say that the charter has been given to Teresa, and so it's finalized, and you can go to raytowncharter.com and see it. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else at this time like to address the count, address this Board of Aldermen regarding any matters within the limits of their control? All right, very good. We'll move past public comments. I, too, want to talk about the Martin Luther King Celebration on Sunday, as exemplified by this young lady, who was one of three finalists for essay writing that day. She delivered, not only did she write an excellent essay, but in front of several hundred people at Grace Way, delivered an outstanding reading of her essay. And her family, I know, is very proud of her, and all of this community was proud of this young lady on that Sunday for, I mean, she's a fourth grader. You don't see many fourth graders today with that sort of talent that that young lady has, and I'm proud to say that she's a Raytowner. All, 100% of her is a Raytowner. So, but it was a very big event, and I think that, you know, Pat Jackson was a very big part of putting this event on. I remember eight years ago, we had maybe 20 or 30 people at Pat's church, Blurgis Presbyterian, to put this event on, and it has grown, and it has continued to grow, and we had to move it to a larger facility last year. John Wiley, a local pastor, also delivered an excellent message, and the whole day was just one that I think this community, this city should be very proud of. The speech that was provided, the delivery by John was excellent, everything about it, the essay writers just capped it off, but it was a truly good day for the City of Raytown, and one that we should all be very proud of. And I look forward to us being more and more involved and continue to grow that event in the years to follow. So again, a very proud moment for our city. Hesh, going to turn it over to you now.
Good evening, Mayor Bowery, Board of Aldermen. I think I would echo your comment on Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration. It probably was one of the best events put together by a number of folks who were involved. Tonight, I'm going to report to you, as I mentioned during my previous reporting, today was the last day to file for municipal election. The deadline was 5:00, and what I'm presenting today is the final list of candidates. There are a few changes, but in order to go through, I'll just go from mayor and onwards. All these terms are going to expire on April 2019. For the mayor, Pat Ertz, and Michael McDonough. City Collector, Kathy Shudy. Alderman Ward I, Joe Kramer, Karen Black, Greg Walters. Alderman Ward II, Jim Azier, Chris Rathbone, and Steve Gunther. Alderman Ward III, Mark Moore, Ryan Myers, Sterling Brown. Alderman Ward IV, Mary Jane Van Busker, and Steve Myers. And Alderman Ward V, Barry Park, and Eric T. Mann. Also, during the audit conducted by the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, they came and did the inspection on our EMS training entity accreditation, and our facility was accredited with flying colors. Just wanted to let the board know about it. Also, today was the first day of our new phone system, so we began that process and making sure everything works, and trying to find out if there are any issues with that. But today, we launched our new phone system, and so far, everything's working according to plan. With that, I will conclude my report for tonight.
Very good. We'll go to community reports. I'll start on my left tonight with Mr. Lightfoot.
There's no legislative report tonight.
Mr. Mock?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Van Busker?
No report tonight, sir.
Mr. Ertz?
No report tonight.
Ms. Emerson?
(Inaudible) involved in the Martin Luther King Celebration, and it was a marvelous success.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson?
I am one of the co-chairs for the First Suburbs Coalition, and we will be meeting on Friday, January 23rd, at the Matt Ross Community Center in Overland Park, and if you need any more information, just contact me.
Mr. Azier?
No reports.
Mr. Green?
Nothing reported this time.
Mr. Kramer?
No report.
And Mr. Green.
Nothing reported this time.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move to legislative session. At this time, we have a consent agenda that contains several items on it. Would anyone on this board desire that any one of those two items or three items actually be removed and dealt with separately?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda has been made. Is there a second? Mr. Van Busker?
I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Van Busker's got the second on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
I want to thank Mary Jo Simmons for volunteering to help on the Council of Aging, which has just been approved by this board, and also Rick Todi to serve on the Police Pension Board, and I thank both of these people for volunteering and stepping up to help the city. We'll move now to the regular agenda. Ask clerk to perform the reading on item number two, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of MW810 mobile data terminals for police department vehicles from Motorola in an amount not to exceed $31,392 for fiscal year 2014, 2015.
We have before us Captain Doug Good. Mr. Good, anything you'd like to add, sir? Captain Good, excuse me. Mr. Van Busker? Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Kramer. Motion made by Mr. Van Busker. Discussion before we vote. Ms. Nelson?
You said that these are in their seventh year of use, and that, so next year, will there be an additional six to?
Five.
Five next year in 2016?
(Inaudible).
Okay. And then, from that time, you'll all be caught up, and then, so how many years?
(Inaudible) before we start the rotation again.
Oh, okay.
(Inaudible) around four or five years for the (inaudible).
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Not appearing. Ask clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Janet Green?
Janet Emerson? Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Captain. Ask clerk to perform the reading on item number three, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of a powered ambulance cot with mounting and associated hardware from Stryker EMS equipment in an amount not to exceed $15,995.
Well, I know you're not here as Doug Jonacy. Please introduce yourself to the public and...
I am Kim La Sage. I am here on behalf of Doug Jonacy, who had a family emergency.
Well, I hope everything's okay, and Kim, you're always welcome here.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about this particular item, please?
Two of our three older ambulance cots were replaced in early 2014, and so now we are asking to replace the third ambulance cot because cots have become so antiquated that parts and labor costs have become very extensive to keep those up.
Any questions of Ms. La Sage? Mr. Ertz?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Ertz has got the motion seconded by Ms. Nelson. Mr. Green?
Thank you. I just had a quick question. I know things come up, obviously. It's a very volatile field, but do you have any idea or maybe estimation about how long these cots would tend to last in terms of their durability? And I understand there's things that come up that could obviously impact that.
The previous cots lasted eight, six to eight years, so I can foresee these lasting probably even longer because they've been able to improve the manufacture of the cots that the previous ones were made.
So it's the same design, I guess? I guess what I'm getting at here is the previous ones, or?
The previous were Ferno, these are Stryker cot.
Okay. All right.
They're a newer cot.
Okay, so just newer, okay.
Modern technology, yes.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Van Busker?
Thank you. Just wanted to point out that the funds for this would be coming from the capital sales tax fund, as was the previous resolution that we just passed. Just wanted to point that out, and certainly, if Kim says this is something they need, that goes a long ways with me. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not appearing. Ask clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Item number four, please. Thank you, Kim.
A resolution authorizing and approving the repair services of wastewater and stormwater infrastructure in the City of Raytown, Missouri from Weideman, Inc., utilizing the City of Lee Summit, Missouri Cooperative Purchase Contract, and approving project expenses for a sewer segment replacement at 9309 East 82nd Street in an amount not to exceed $46,800.
Mr. Jim Melvin is our interim Public Works Director. Anything you'd like to add, sir?
This is a particularly urgent project. We have the budget to cover it, and this is the most urgent at this time.
Very good. Questions or comments, Mr. Melvin, or a motion, please? Mr. Green?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Mr. Green's got the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Kramer. Discussion before we vote, please. Call the vote, please.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Ask clerk to perform the reading on item number five, please.
Resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Leeeth &amp; Sons, Inc., for the 79th Street and Elm Storm Drainage Improvement Project within the city in an amount not to exceed $78,930, and amending the fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget by $78,930.
Again, Mr. Melvin, anything you'd like to add on this one, sir?
This is a stormwater project, and as you're aware, there is no funding for projects. This one, unfortunately, is one that we cannot put off any longer. Current structure there has collapsed in one part. Guardrail on the one side was an accident. Cannot be replaced since the stones that make up the previous structure damaged to such an extent that there's nothing left to attach to.
Mr. Mock, you have a question?
I would just like to point out that the concerns are a Raytown contractor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mock's got the motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Ms. Emerson's got the second. Further discussion? Mr. Kramer?
You mentioned about the accident at the guardrail. Is there any insurance money that's going to help fund this, or?
I'd have to defer to Teresa. I know we have applied to the insurance company, but don't know what the result is yet.
There was no insurance involved with the damage to our guardrail. However, I have asked for restitution through municipal court.
Okay. Thank you.
Good answer. And would you repeat that, please, so we can hear you? We couldn't hear you up here. Only one of us could.
I have, there was no insurance involved with the individual guardrail. I've asked for restitution through municipal court. It should be coming back through our courts within the next couple of months.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Ms. Emerson?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Van Busker?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Ertz?
Yes, I'm very glad, since I live near this location. I believe when you are repairing this, you're going to make it at a width wider than it was before. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So should we ever be lucky enough to finally get some curbs or shoulders on 79th Street in that area, the bridge, which would be an expensive part of a future project, would already be done, so this really will help us out down the road, which sounds like we're thinking ahead, and I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Van Busker?
I do have one question. Yeah, in regards to our, the engineer's estimate, which was, I think, the option made was around $115,000. Is that from our city engineer?
That was from the consulting engineer that drew the plans.
So far as we can tell, we hope we don't run into anything that was unexpected, so. All right. Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second. No further discussion. Ask clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
All right. Item number six is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for an event space on property located at 10028 E63rd Street. I ask at this time for the clerk to perform the second reading on this, please.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit subject to certain conditions to operate an event space on property located at 10028 E63rd Street in Raytown, Missouri.
We'll reopen the public hearing at this time. Would anyone on the board like to share any ex parte communication they may have had? Very good. Mr. Benson is before us, is our official development and public affairs director. Got it right that time, John. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. As I, this is the second reading for this conditional use permit, which proposes, or is seeking approval of a conditional use permit for operation of an event space at 10028 E63rd Street, which previously is the location where Walnicks has been operating over the past approximately 10 years. It's a new owner. As she described at the last meeting to you, it's a very similar use as to what Walnicks operated at, at the site. The applicant is here tonight. They have no additional information they told me to present to you unless you have questions for them, and they'd be happy to answer those, as would I. So with that, I will take any questions if there are any.
Any questions of John before we go to public comment? Mr. Van Busker? Nope. Pulled it back. Ms. Nelson, excuse me.
On the taxes on this property, have they all been paid?
With that, I will take any questions if there are any.
Any questions of John before we go to public comment? Mr. Van Busker? Nope, pulled it back. Mr. Mel, Ms. Melson, excuse me.
On the taxes on this property, have they all been paid up to date? And any outstanding items of...
I am not aware of any past due taxes on the, on the property.
Okay, because I know that we have a 2014 tax thing in here, but I know that was due...
The applicants may be able to, are probably in a better position to answer that question than I am.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I need to come forward, sir. The thousands of people in the audience on the TVs at home won't be able to hear you back there.
Nathan Prather, KW Commercial Real Estate, representing the property. Live at 7108 North Park Avenue in Gladstone, Missouri. My understanding...
With ties to Raytown.
What's that?
With strong ties to Raytown.
That is correct. My, my stepmom actually went to Raytown High. But as far as taxes for 2014, my understanding is that has been paid in full.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anything else you want to add at this time regarding the application?
No, thank you. Just want to thank all you guys for the time that you spent in looking at this and give Melanie the opportunity to run her business as she sees fit and really, again, appreciate the opportunity.
Good. Would anyone in the audience at this time like to step forward regarding public comment on this particular item? We'll move on past that. John, anything else you'd like to add, sir?
I have nothing further.
Does the board have any questions or comments for the applicant or Mr. Benson? Mr. Mock?
Yes, the question I have is on the signage itself. I know, driving by today, I saw the KZ in the window and I don't know what else. What do you plan on having for signage? That's what I'd like to know.
Melanie Morrissey, 11235 Calico Drive, Kansas City, Missouri, 64137. We're obviously going to update all that. We just wanted to make sure that everything would go smoothly here first, and we'll update the signage. Because right now it has Walnix on it, and we're going to change the name to KZ's, so we'll update all that. It'll be more professional, obviously.
Just say KC or...
Yes.
Okay. Anything else or...
Oh, that's it. Nice and simple.
Anything on, is going to stay on the windows or anything like that or...
I mean, we'll probably put on the windows, you know, like maybe dates, times, things like that, you know, what we're going to be doing there. But as of right now, we're just going to leave the windows as they are, and we'll probably change the signage.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Ms. Emerson?
Motion to approve.
We're going to, I'm going to close public hearing and accept Ms. Emerson's motion to approve, and Mr. Green has a second. We're in board discussion still. I'm going to go to Ms. Melson first.
Oops, sorry.
Go to Mr. Azier.
I had asked you, John, last time, if you would check to see whether there's any state regulations for youth groups like this, the state. Did you do that?
I did do some research. There is no, for this type of facility, there's no state regulation that they have to, like a daycare would have, or things like that, that would come into play on this type of use.
And there's no regulation that would require them to have a police officer on hand or events?
No, only, only the conditions that are, as provided in your ordinance, which, none of which require a police officer to be on premise when they're in operation.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
I just wanted to comment, just from our conversation last time, you being a former teacher, current teacher.
Current.
Current, okay. You know, obviously I have experience working with kids and supervision of such, and I was real satisfied with your answers about the safety of these children going in, and I'm looking forward to voting for this.
Perfect, thank you.
Mock? Yeah, there is one other question. Will there be a time limit where the children have to be out of the parking lot?
Absolutely. I mean, we're doing 6:30 to 10:00 Friday and Saturday nights. We expect everyone to be there at 10:00 to pick their children up, and we'll have contact information for everyone that's in the building. I'll just make sure that I have that, and we'll be contacting parents if they're not there to get their children at, you know, 10:05 maybe. We'll give you a little bit of leeway, but not much.
Okay, well, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? Ask clerk to call the vote, please.
Mayor Bauer, second.
Second was Mr. Green. Otherwise known as Mr. Josh Green.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Thank you for caring for the youth in this community, and we appreciate, appreciate that effort and look forward to you being very successful.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Ask clerk to perform the second reading on item number seven, please.
An ordinance adding Article 16 to Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Raytown, the purpose of defining smoke and tobacco stores and limiting their occurrence in the city limits.
Mr. Benson, anything you'd like to add, sir?
Yes, just as a quick summary, as I described at your previous meeting on this agenda item, this proposes to create a new article in the city code. It would be Article 17 of, to chapter, or in Chapter 10 of the city's code, regulating smoke shops. It would create a new definition or define what is a smoke shop, which would be based on the amount of sales generated by the business exceeding 70% or, excuse me, 70% or more of the, the sales of the business related to tobacco products or tobacco-related products that would comprise as a smoke shop. And then it also establishes limitations on the number of smoke shops at one store per 5,000 residents, and then distance separation requirements of 2,640 feet from the boundary of the city, as well as 2,640 feet from any property on which another smoke or tobacco shop is located, and 500 feet from any property legally used as a public park, school, church, or residence. The enforcement of this regulation would come through the city's business licensing regulations. When each business renews their license, it would provide information on their sales, information that would then indicate to us whether or not they are qualified or categorized as a smoke shop, smoke or tobacco shop. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Ertz is the person who first brought this forward. Anything you'd like to add, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Bauer. Thanks to city staff, all the work you've done on this, and every place. I'd like to remind you that this is not a, a, we're going to stop, say, the liquor smoke store at 63rd and Raytown Road. That's not qualifying as a, we believe be a smoke shop underneath this ordinance. Also, most of the towns that we, that I think we know of that there's currently two, this would be a pure smoke shop. Reason for calling them a smoke shop is because they are allowed to sell meth, hydrazone, or paraphernalia for drug use in stores. State reserves do not allow us to ban completely the sale of those items for whatever reason. They do allow us to limit to where they can be sold. So I believe, if I'm going to decide on which side of this, whether it's the right of the business to sell things, this ordinance will take the paraphernalia out of the quick trips to small markets of the city. It would be a better business environment. It will keep the distance. Ordinances will keep it away from our neighborhoods, our limits away from parks and schools and things like that. And all that, and the distances isn't so much that it's a smoke shop, because those things can be sold in other type stores. It's the paraphernalia that can be sold in those stores that would not be allowed, at least, certainly limited to Raytown, which is a place that's busy. With that, all we do, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Ertz has a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Azier. Mr. Van Busker?
I also want to thank the staff for their hard work on this. I appreciate it. This is something that I know I have had a concern about for many, many years, and I think it's certainly a step in the right direction. We're limited as to what we can do, but I think this is the right thing to do, and it's a healthy thing to do for our community. You know, we're just talking about bringing a facility in and letting them operate for junior high students. And in our city, we just approved that. So I think limitations on these type of businesses would be a good thing if we're trying to bring young people in and bring young families into our community, then certainly this is the right direction we need to go. Thank you.
Mr. Green, Mr. Josh Green?
Thank you. You know, I, I look at this, and I'm all on board with, with limiting the sale of these items from convenience stores and keeping them out of the vision of our kids. I'm all on board with this. My biggest concern still lies on limiting the number of smoke shops. And honestly, I did a little bit of analysis in terms of distance-wise, and if you really look at the simple fact that it can't be half a mile from the boundary of the city, half a mile away from, or half, within a half a mile of another smoke shop, and within 500 feet of any, basically any public park school or any residence in the city, which us being essentially a big bedroom community is, you know, very difficult to attain, I really legitimately only see about four spaces that one of these could open up in our city. That being said, what I don't want to see is us limit the opportunities of small businessmen who perhaps want to open a legitimate smoke shop that doesn't actually sell any paraphernalia because of the simple fact that they will be doing over 70% of their sales as tobacco. I don't want them to fall under this piece of legislation because I don't think that's fair to a legitimate business owner that wants to essentially open up. So I, that's basically where my analysis is here. I'm all on board with limiting self paraphernalia to smoke shops, but I cannot jump on board with this as long as there's limitations on where legitimate business owners can start businesses.
Mr. Azier?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Green, Mr. Jason Green?
Thank you. Obviously, there's no one up here that, that supports illegal drug use, and, and this is not, I think there was a perception given at the last meeting that this was an attitude or a false dichotomy, if you will, where there was those who support these types of items being sold and those that don't. That's not the issue here, and I wanted to say that because I was kind of discouraged by some of those comments I heard. But moving on, I, my understanding, and John, I have a couple of questions, and I got some comments, but I had one quick question here. So 70%, this only applies to the store, retail stores, that make 70% of their sales from tobacco, correct? Just to clarify?
Tobacco or tobacco-related products.
Okay. So when I keep hearing these comments about gas stations, and, you know, we don't want to see our kids seeing these products in gas stations, gas stations would not fall under this ordinance, correct?
That's correct, and let me provide one other clarification. I apologize, I should have clarified this on my introductory comments. For the businesses that sell 70% or more of their, of tobacco or tobacco-related products that then they qualify or are defined as a tobacco shop or smoke shop, what that'll, it's not just defining them as that. What that does then is those businesses that meet that threshold are then allowed to sell tobacco paraphernalia. If they don't meet that threshold, then they cannot sell tobacco paraphernalia. The items that Alderman Ertz referred to would only be allowed to be sold in those businesses that sell 70% or more of their product as tobacco or tobacco-related.
So this is, this is not, so it's not based on sales per se? It's based on the items they have? I mean, I guess...
No, it's based on sales of tobacco, just exactly what you were thinking. But once they achieve that 70%, then they're allowed to sell tobacco-related paraphernalia.
Okay, so just to clarify, gas stations, if this ordinance passes, are still, nothing changes?
They, they, they would not be able to sell, if their, if their sales do not comprise 70% or, let me rephrase that. If 70% or more of their sales are not related to tobacco products, then they could not sell tobacco paraphernalia, which is sometimes looked at as drug paraphernalia.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
So the convenience stores would not be able to, to have those items for sale any longer.
Okay. And I know the difficulty I keep running into is that I haven't got a, and again, it's no fault to your own, but the last meeting I asked a question.
Sure.
There was never no hard number on how many actual stores we have. I heard it was on here in one, maybe two.
And we won't...
That actually fell with under this, that would kind of, at least we estimate. And, and in my mind, you know, I, I think, I'm kind of cautious about regulating something. We don't exactly know the number of it. You know, I, I feel there's, there's some concerns I have with that and its practicality. Now, you mentioned earlier that the enforcement of this would not fall on the police department. It would fall, however, on, on the business licensing end, correct?
Well, it, it could fall on the police department if, if a business is selling drug par, or, excuse me, tobacco paraphernalia and it is not, doesn't, their sales don't comprise, or they haven't provided information to the city through their business licensing that, that they can, that their sales comprise 70% or more of tobacco paraphernalia. Stopping that maybe, that's, depends on the nature of the, what they're being sold, whether that's a police department or a code enforcement from the Department of Development and Public Affairs.
So when these businesses get their license renewed, they have to submit additional paperwork to the city?
That's correct.
To, to get this stuff addressed and set aside?
That's correct.
And I assume that would be something, well, if this passes, something that will have to communicate this, this additional paperwork to these businesses, all those new businesses?
That's correct. We, currently the city...
Renewed, rather.
On business license renewals, we sent out a letter, so this information would be incorporated into that information sent out for business license renewals.
Okay, okay. See, and, and again, I'm, thank you for the answering the questions, John. I just, I don't know how effective this will be, number one, and, and then this is just my comments here. I, I'm going to reiterate my point about the fact that I find issues with regulating something when we don't exactly have a hard definition on it. I'm curious to what the police department, their opinion is on such. I don't know if you have any comments to this, sir? I'm sorry to mean to call you out there, but in terms of the enforcement issues, in terms of if something was not in compliance, is it just like it is now in terms of, because this is a legal product being sold, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Look, Captain, Captain, unfortunately, we, again, the thousands in the viewing audience can't hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
It may be worth several thousand, so.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing.
25,500, so, yeah.
Yes, if they're in violation, we would be able to issue a general summons for them, basically. It's not something we would typically like to take someone to jail on, but it would be a summons, and we'd have the power to shut them down.
Okay, I see. And so you, I guess you guys would do that if the city requested such to, to do that?
It's kind, it's a lot like some of the liquor violations, as far as liquor licensing. The city clerk would notify us, we notify the shop owner, and shut them down, and then if they continue to sell, they could be arrested, basically in GOS.
Okay, all right. Well, hey, I appreciate the answers to the questions, etc. Sorry to call you up, appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Go to Ms. Emerson now, please.
I have a question about, you're saying that when they submit their application for a license, is there any verification that they would have to give in order to do that? Or they could just write down, we do 70% of the, our business and that?
I don't know that answer right now, off the cuff, without doing a little bit of research, and I don't know if Ms. Duffson may be able to answer that question because she oversees her business licensing more directly than I, than I am involved with, but... Well, before Brenda speaks, I'd like to back up for just a moment, going back to Alderman Green's question or comments about the police department. In addition to Mr. Willis, myself, Scott Peterson, who's in, in our department behind the, operating the camera tonight, we also, the Chief Lynch was involved in review of the, in the development of this amendment, as was our prosecuting attorney, Ross Nygro. And so, those were key people to have, all of us played a role, and particularly Ross and Chief Lynch, on the enforceability and the, and the ability...
Chief Lynch, on the enforceability and the ability to enforce this if somebody violated it and bring them to court. So just to clarify that or provide that additional information, so.
On the business license, we do, even the amount of money that their business license is, fee is decided by, is, we take their word for what they say they made. They have to sign a statement at the end of the business license stating that this is true. And so if we find then later that they didn't indicate the correct information, then we can issue a summons. So right now, we don't verify even their gross receipts, but that's how we determine what their fee is for a license.
Thank you.
Mr. Lightfoot.
So I guess I'll touch on a few points that others have made.
A few points that others have made. Obviously, I wish the state would allow us to ban all paraphernalia sales in the entire city anywhere. That's not an option. So I like that the ordinance does ban the sale of any type of paraphernalia in a convenience store, a gas station, any kind of place that a family would go with, a kid. That makes perfect sense and I totally agree with that. But regulating the number of tobacco-related stores, I don't agree with, like Alderman Josh Green said, you know, there are people out there that may want to open up a fine cigar store, right? So this is going to regulate that person right out of being able to open that type of business, perfectly legitimate business. There's nothing wrong with that kind of business. So that's the kind of thing that I don't agree with. I'd have a hard time supporting it because of putting that, that type of stipulation. So I want to reiterate, I completely support banning the sale of paraphernalia and I would love to take it out of any sort of gas station, convenience store, any other place than a tobacco store. And I wish we could take it out of there too, but we can't, per state regulation, so. I think that it would impede an honest business person that wanted to do a legitimate business, so I would have a hard time supporting it.
Mr. Kramer.
Pardon me. How quickly should we pass something like this? How quickly would it be implemented? Would we be going to locations that would carry these type of products and letting them know? Is it going to be a phone call? Is it going to be a letter? Is it going to be a personal visit? Or is it just when the business license is renewed?
Each month, we send out business license renewals to their businesses whose business licenses are coming up for renewal. And we would modify the letter that is sent out to them and incorporate the language related to this amendment if and when it's adopted. So it would be implemented in a sense immediately, but truly, it would take, it would occur over a course of a year because I don't know when, you know, it's up to each business to determine if they comply, want, fall into the category of, of, say, 70% and then they would need to provide that information. And it could be the first month a business may qualify, or it could be, you know, next December or next January before.
So that's what you're saying is that if somebody last December renewed their license, this wouldn't take effect on them until they go to renew that license?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Green, Mr. Josh Green.
Thank you. I just want to verify what I think I already know, I just want to double check. So if, like Alderman Lightfoot was saying, if there was like a fine cigar shop that wanted to open up in town, since over 70% of their sales would be tobacco, even though they wouldn't have interest of selling any tobacco paraphernalia, they would still be limited by the distance and population regulations that we have listed in the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure on that. Thank you.
Mr. Earths.
Thank you. As I've been hearing from buyer, though, the only businesses that would want to argue that I sell 70% of tobacco would be to sell paraphernalia. Otherwise, the question does not become asked. Is that correct? So you're not stopping any business from opening up because the only stipulation we're asking them to do is if you want to sell paraphernalia, we don't ask them what their percentages are, we reserve that. But if they want to sell paraphernalia, then, the answer will be that I'm the center of the case, then I follow and get that rule. So I don't think it does hit your legitimate cigar shops or places like that because I don't think, we're not, I don't think the question would come up. Or I would listen to anybody's comment on that.
That's the way I see it, which I think takes, is more business friendly to sound, but we're just limiting the paraphernalia.
Mr. Van Busker.
The limitation is one per 5,000 population. If anyone really believes we need more than one per 5,000 population, then I guess you can certainly oppose this. But I don't think that's too stringent a regulation.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Rebuttal to Mr. Earth's comment, because I don't think it was right. I think staff has reported that any business owner, when they do their business license, is required to give us a receipt of what their sales were. And if I'm in a cigar shop, I think my sales are tobacco.
I would note, there are two types of citing requirements here. Mr. Van Busker pointed out the one per 5,000 residents, that's one. We also added the citing requirement, which I believe Alderman Green recited, to three distance. Those, all of this staff patterned after the, had two.
On-shop.
On-shop regulation that we passed, that you passed six, eight months ago. And so that's why we put those distance. You don't have to have both or either. You could, if you were only going to limit it to five, you could take out those distance regulations. But this also presents, and I think Alderman Green went through analysis of that, is it cuts the number of sites down where they can be located, also because of those distance ones. And that was desired in the on-shop regulation. And Peterson has worked very hard on this. I also went through a theoretical site map today and it is a very number, very narrow number of sites that would qualify for a new business as a tobacco store. All those over 70% would come under this definition. It would limit you selling drug paraphernalia to if you met that definition, but all would have to register their sales, so we would see whether or not they fell into that limitation, in my opinion.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Azier.
As I see this ordinance doesn't prohibit people from opening shops because currently we only have two. And if we have one shop for every 5,000, we have theoretically the possibility of four more shops. And both our attorney and Josh Green said there's only spaces for four more shops if it passes anyway, so we're not really holding back the possibility that people might want to open more shops because there's four more spaces, almost triple the number we have now. So I think it's really a very favorable ordinance.
Mr. Lightfoot. Mr. Van Busker.
Just one other comment. Certainly, what we do here and the ordinance we pass is not extenuating. We have the ability to always amend any ordinance if we see that, or see that there's a need for that. So that avenue is always open to us. It's not as if we're closing the door to ever changing this.
Mr. Josh Green.
This is more of a query, I guess, to Mr. Willerth. Is there a way or a motion that I could make that would make it essentially where we could break it down and vote on the first fact being limiting tobacco paraphernalia sales to smoke shops and the second fact being distance and population regulations? Or, I just want to know, because, I mean, I'm hearing essentially, I think there's a camp here that's like, okay, like, we want to see, I think everyone here kind of wants to see the tobacco paraphernalia sales be taken out of these convenience stores and stuff like that. But I don't think everybody's on the same boat when it comes to the regulation in terms of number of.
In response to your inquiry, it appeared to me that Section 3 of your ordinance page, well, funny thing, there's be Section 3, but, hey, on the second Section 3, that Article 7, Section 10-576 is created, that has the distance boundaries, it also has the number of residents. So there's two things you could do. If enough of you have a consensus, we could go back as a staff and draft something that takes out the distance regulation or the population regulation, if that's the majority or submission that some would think would make this, the entire thing, a more tolerable business-wise principle. Or, that's the main debate I've heard about this. It seems you all are in favor of regulating drug and tobacco paraphernalia by a business definition as opposed by zoning. So those standards aren't required and those are what's creating the limits of the locations of the business. But you're still putting a limit, as my Alderman just came up and aptly said, it was I think Van Busker, who said, yes, there's still three or four more. Mr. Azier said, there's three or four more sites. This, as currently drawn, is defining where those three or four sites are, though. Those out, it would barely be the distance, the population regulation in subsection 3, subsection 4. But I don't mean to confuse, it needs to be a motion to amend the ordinance to take it out or a discussion that you want us to come back and give you some alternatives that don't have the distance regulation.
Okay.
Clear as mud on that.
What's that?
Clear as mud on that.
Sure, yeah. Okay. I'm, I mean, I don't know. Personally, to me, I feel like either A, if we could have both, both regulations brought to us and either A, separate pieces, separate ordinances, or B, if we could amend it so that way, we're voting on one tonight and then have the other one come up to us next meeting. Personally, I would feel a lot more comfortable with that and that's just my two cents. If anybody else wants to, you know, pitch in their thought, I'd be more than happy to hear it. That's just my.
What's your discussion on that, Ms. Emerson?
My question, Brenda said that it would, or you, I forgot which one, John, said that if it went into effect, say, somebody just renewed their license in December, they get a whole year, whereas somebody has to do it in February, right then, it's cut off.
Well, if somebody, let's say somebody renewed, a business owner renewed their business license in December, this gets adopted, they want that ability to do, to sell tobacco paraphernalia. They could come in and amend their license at any time in the year. They wouldn't have to wait until the renewal came back up. They could come in a week later after they renewed, or three months, or six months, or any, any point.
But they wouldn't.
They'd have that opportunity if they wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Azier.
Mr. Mayor, I want to call a point of order. We do have a motion on the floor with a second, so we either need an amended, we need to vote. Mr. Earths went through his draw.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear a motion being made, I heard discussion being called for it.
Originally, yes.
But do you offer a motion to change this?
I have not made a motion to amend, however, I will make one if.
That's your only choice.
Yeah. I guess at that point, if I have the floor at the moment, I don't know if I do, do I have recognized, okay, I just want to make sure. In that case, I guess I will make an amendment then to withdraw regulations concerning distance and population, but I can't remember which exact numbers they were, I apologize, Joe.
I believe there's subsection 3, subsections 1 and 4 of that section, probably a whole section we have to go. So 3, 1 and 3, 4?
Yeah, it'd be 3, 1 and 3, 4. And that would be in section, yeah, section, there we go, the first Section 3, so right now, Section 2, sorry. Yeah, Section 3, Subsection 1 and 4. I guess I would make a motion to amend, to remove those. Does that make sense, people?
No, I didn't understand this.
And motion dies for lack of a second.
I, I, I had my, you didn't call on me.
I didn't see your light earlier, sir.
Second.
Restate your motion, please.
My motion is to, I guess, strike Section, Subsection 1s and 4 of Section 3, citing Article 17, Section 10-576, type of requirements there. It's under, it's on page 3, page 3, striking Section 3, Subsections 1 and 4.
Protocol, Mr. Lightfoot, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. I've got a motion and a second. Joe, are you and staff clear on what is being asked here?
We're clear, but in rereading it, it appears that all four subsections, and we didn't say that initially, because when we're reading 2 and 3 more carefully, Alderman Green, it appears there you're defining separation distances and I don't think they'll be applicable if we get rid of 1 and 4. So I think all subsections 3, 1, 2, 3 and 4, the appropriate motion to amend to delete. And that's here, rightfully to recite Section 10-576, unfortunately, there's a subsection 3 right above it involving 10-575, and that would remain in effect.
That's what happened, you guys confused.
That's confusing, Richard.
So I guess so moved as Mr. Willerth stated, striking 1, 2, 3 and 4.
All right, so we're in the discussion. We've got a motion and a second. This particular item has to do with deletion of the distance requirements in four sections.
Deletion requirements and the population requirement.
So we're distance, we're deleting distance and population?
The, Section 4 is the population requirement and we are deleting Section 4, yes.
So you're wanting to delete distance and population requirements out of that? All right, we're in the discussion on this motion. Mr. Van Busker.
So we're going to delete 500 feet from a public park, school, church or residence. Now we would allow that, is that correct by the ordinance? That's what we've just done, I believe.
What, what, what it would get rid of is essentially, it would get rid of the distance requirements and the population regulation.
That is a distance requirement that's there.
Yes, it would get rid of that.
That would eliminate that.
And then what I would do is essentially, it would make this vote to limit tobacco, if I, if I am correct, to limit tobacco paraphernalia just to stores that have 70% of their sales as tobacco. They have the option to sell tobacco paraphernalia. That is what it would be. Now, if we want to, what I would personally like to see is I would like to see this as one vote and the, you know, regulations as another vote. That would be my preference. I kind of brought that out there, but nobody really responded off me, so that was just my thought.
I believe the original ordinance as written is the best ordinance and I will support it, I'll not support the amendment.
Mr. Earths.
Get that right here. I believe that's what's going to, what you just asked is what's going to happen because we would take a vote on whether or not that gets deleted out and then we will go back to the original vote, which is to pass this or whatever. So we will see how that goes.
Say that again, please. My head's starting to hurt over this issue.
I believe that to remove the distance requirements of 500 feet from residential and parks for businesses that can sell paraphernalia is what he would like to remove. That is the first vote we're going to do here. And then after that vote, we will still come back and we will still have the other ordinance on here, whether or not that's deleted from it or not, just do a vote on it in a second.
Mr. Lightfoot.
I'm getting a nod over here, so.
Do you agree with that?
Amendment or do we just need a vote?
The amendment defeats both.
The amendment that beats both distance and population regulation. It will leave the effect of the original bill to only permit drug paraphernalia sales in tobacco shops of over 70%. That's what it will do, which then not take the second step of limitation they're citing, as Mr. Van Busker explained in his presentation. I think it is addressing the concern that Mr. Green and Mr. Lightfoot raised, that we were limiting legitimate businesses to USA.
But we will then go back to vote for the-
If the amendment fails-
If the amendment fails, we go back.
The original motion will be, will be back in. And then you vote, if it passes, you're going to go back and vote on the bill as amended. This is just whether or not the amendment is limited.
You're willing to roll the dice on that? Alright, Mr. Azier?
Yeah, John, I guess my question would be, under this pretense, how many businesses would this ordinance, if it passed as amended, would it really affect? Are there really that many stores out there selling these kinds of items?
We, we did an inventory, I wouldn't call it an official inventory, because we didn't go to every single business in Raytown, but of the businesses that either advertised themselves as a smoke shop or something related to smoke shops, most of them, with maybe the exception of one, and even that one, I'm not sure about, because we don't know their percentage of sales they generate, kind of going back to what Alderman Green had talked about earlier. But the other ones, based on the items they have for sale and the quantity of items that are not tobacco-related, is not, but they advertise themselves as a smoke shop, under this, under the definition that's proposed here, they would not be a smoke shop. And that doesn't mean they can, they can still advertise as a smoke shop, but for this purpose of what this ordinance is addressing, they would not be allowed, assuming our visual observation is accurate, they would not be classified as a smoke shop and would not be allowed to sell tobacco paraphernalia.
I guess I'm-
So, our estimate is it's one, and as Alderman Ertz said, there's maybe two, and I would say two at the very most, and I'm, and my, from my personal opinion, I think it's one in town that this affects.
I guess what I'm seeing here personally is that, first of all, the ordinance as written didn't create that big of a change in the first place, and if we pass it as amended, I'm almost wondering why we even have the ordinance at this point.
Mr. Lightfoot?
You know, now I'm getting confused. If we passed it as amended, it would still forbid to sell paraphernalia in convenience stores or gas stations. So yes, it would, it would have a bigger effect.
Mr. Ertz?
I think there's some confusion when we talk smoke shop and where these things are currently being sold. These pipes are being sold at a lot of places throughout town, probably more, I wouldn't say all, gas station, convenience stores, but definitely a lot of them. A lot of them are even at heights right next to the candy bars and things like that, and their stores. All of those would be affected by this. Either way, it's, with distances or not, or with population or not. What the argument is, after that is, if you're going to limit it, then would you want to also limit the number of places that could possibly sell us? And that's what the first vote's going to be, is whether we want to put further restrictions on how many technical smoke shops, or i.e., places that could possibly sell paraphernalia are in the city or not. And then after that, we could still vote to limit it, we can still take it out of the convenience stores, the gas stations, and whatever else.
Mr. Green?
Thank you. The reason, and sorry for the confusion, first of all, folks, I know that it's confusing, but just hang with me for a minute. The reason I brought this before you, or I guess this amendment, if you will, is because, like all of you here, I think this is a problem, and I want to address it. The thing is, I don't want to step on the toes of any legitimate businessman who might want to open up a tobacco shop in town that would meet this definition of a smoke shop, and I think John was even saying last meeting, that there's a smoke shop in town that would meet the definition of a smoke shop, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but they, you, I believe you were saying, or maybe it was Pat, but they refuse to sell those items because they don't believe in them. And, and if I'm incorrect there, you can, you can correct me, but I recollect somebody bringing that up last meeting. And so, I just don't want a regulation that is conceived in, I'm not going to use the term fear here, it's not conceived in fear, but it's conceived in, in an attempt to regulate a problem that it's not actually, or it's an attempt to solve a problem that it's not actually solving. All that piece, all that regulation is doing is regulating the number of smoke shops somebody can have. Yeah, sure, they can buy, though, they can sell tobacco paraphernalia if they want to, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to. And so, we're firing the bullet before we aim, essentially. And that's why I bring this amendment to you, because I think it's a problem, that's why we need to limit it, so that way you have to be a smoke shop in order to sell these items, so you can't sell them in convenience stores and stuff like that. But if you still want to open up a smoke shop in Raytown, you want to sell cigars, you want to have a giant humidor, then you can still do it. That's what I want. So, and you know, the thing is, yeah, sure, we may only have two, one or two smoke shops now, but that doesn't mean that maybe in the future, we won't see a small Westport District develop or something like that, where you see, you know, small independent shops like that, that have individual crafts that you don't normally see, you know, in, you know, the big box stores and all that stuff. So, that's all I'm trying to protect with this amendment, is essentially the rights of the small business owner and the future of Raytown.
Mr. Van Busker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we're really saying is, we have a problem, we recognize that. They're selling paraphernalia in a lot of our convenience stores, a lot of the stores in town. So we want to make it so that we eliminate part of that problem, but we want to start another problem by not limiting the number of stores with a capacity to sell paraphernalia. That's exactly what this amendment would do, and because you're, it's unlimited then. You can open any number of those you wanted in the city. Then we're right back where we are now, we have the same problem. That's what we're trying to eliminate, is a number, reduce the number of stores in our city that sell paraphernalia. That's what it's all about. You know, I don't think it's a revenue issue, I don't think it's a, really a small business issue. I believe it's one that goes deeper than that, in the conscience of our city, and to the well-being of our city, and the health of our city, and what we want to present to people about our community and our neighborhoods. And I believe, I believe we do need to limit the number of these. And I would like to see it eliminated totally, and some of you have said that. But we can't do that by law, but we can limit it to just a few. And again, we're not limiting to that, you know, it's one per 5,000 residents, you can have a lot of these. With this ordinance passed, as I said before, if you felt like you need to change that in the future, it could always be brought back and amended.
Back to Mr. Josh Green.
Thank you. I do just want to say, folks, if you, if you vote for the amendment and you end up voting for, to basically take it out of convenience stores and put it in smoke shops, and where essentially your kids aren't seeing it, then you're not just going to see smoke shops spring up all over the place. There isn't the market, there's no market for it here in Raytown. You're not going to see a smoke shop on every corner, because there's not the market for it. You have to have 70% of your sales be tobacco. Now, don't get me wrong, we have smoking bars in Raytown, there are a decent amount of smokers, there's not enough smokers to support 40 smoke shops. The thing that will limit the number of smoke shops in this town is not necessarily not saying that, well, you can only have a certain number of smoke shops, it's got to be the market. That, well, in the words of Adam Smith, I guess, the invisible hand of the free market is going to solve the problem for us. Now, thank you. Now, what I'll say, though, essentially, is that, you know, I don't want to see this on every corner, but the thing is, you won't. To think so is an irrational, irrational concept, like we're just going to see just a smoke shop on every corner, I just, it's not going to happen, there's not the market for it, you aren't going to have enough people buying tobacco paraphernalia, buying tobacco in order to support that industry from overgrowing everything else. It's just not going to happen.
Mr. Kramer?
Call the vote.
We've called the question. Discussion on calling the question. Alright, let's vote on calling the question. Voted yes ceases discussion on this amendment, immediately takes us to a vote on the amendment. Call that, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock? Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
That's court, call the vote, please, on the amendment. Anyone to have, need to have the amendment re-stated? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
No.
Alderman Van Busker?
No.
Alderman Kramer?
No.
Alderman Azier?
No.
Alderman Emerson?
No.
Alderman Ertz?
No.
Alderman Mock?
No.
Motion fails, we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion? We've talked a lot about it. Mr. Kramer?
I didn't slide sex.
Let me make sure you read the directions on the lights. Alright, a lot of discussion, everybody clearing what we're voting on in this amendment, or this motion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
No.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
No.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
No.
Alderman Emerson?
No.
Motion passes. Pat, I'm going to take this moment to thank you for, you have been a champion of a number of ordinances, and offering ordinances, and working with the aldermen to bring ordinances before the city that has changed the culture of our community, and I thank you for your, your time, time again efforts to bring good, sensible ordinances before this board. With that, we're going to go to a public hearing to consider an application for Chapter 353 tax abatement for property located at 10,014 East 63rd Street. Ask the clerk to perform the first reading on this, please.
In ordinance adopting and approving the sixth amended development plan submitted by the Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation, establishing a declaration that the redevelopment area described within the sixth amended development plan is a blighted area in need of development and redevelopment, and they authorize certain tax abatements within the redevelopment area described within the sixth amended development plan.
Mr. Tom Cole is here, is our Economic Development Administrator, anything you'd like to add, sir?
Chair, Mayor Board of Aldermen, thank you for the time this evening. The city has received an application for 353 tax abatement, which is before you this evening. Just as, as sort of a reminder to this body as to how the 353 process works, we receive an application. At that time, we call our 353 abatement attorney, Williams and Campo. They perform a tax impact analysis, which identifies how much of tax abatement will be generated, or will be forgiven, basically, over the 10-year period of this program. We also convene a meeting of the Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation. Any community that has a 353 program or redevelopment programs often has, or by state statutes required to have a redevelopment corporation. That redevelopment corporation reviews the application, they review the tax impact analysis, and they determine whether or not, and they evaluate whether or not that application meets the intent of the incentive that's already set, set forth by the, by the community. So, we received the application, we met with Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation, and they recommend approval of this particular project. This project is the State Farm Office on 63rd Street, there with all the little strip of shops near where KZ's received their approval earlier this evening. But the Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation Board of Directors has recommended approval of the amended application for Chapter 353 tax abatement at Level A Market Stabilizing for the property located at 10,0014 East 63rd Street. Again, this is the State Farm Office. Chapter 353 tax abatement is an economic development incentive that's by state law allows for fuller partial tax relief for those who are willing to redevelop property within blighted areas. Now, to take a step out of my little spiel here, several years ago, I believe it was 2006, 2007, a blight study was done for the entire downtown area. At that point, the way this incentive was crafted was essentially it threw a blanket over the given territory there, where the blight study was completed, and essentially, any project that comes forward that falls within that, within the bounds of that property, are eligible for 353 tax abatement if they meet up to the rest of the standard. We'll get into that here in just a moment. The intent of the RMRC is to strengthen the economic viability of the downtown Raytown area by providing an innovative financial incentive for improving the exterior appearance, interior, and structural conditions of the buildings within that area. A little bit about the project. The applicant operates a second-generation State Farm agency in downtown Raytown, has recently completed a sizable interior remodel of her facility in downtown Raytown. The applicant has contacted the city with the intent to obtain 353 tax abatement on the remaining exterior improvements to be made to the facility. We're not talking about what she's already done inside, this will be new work to the outside of the facility. The project will include a new front facade, including the appearance of a new second-story signage and an updated rear elevation. The project does meet the requirements of the city's tax abatement policy, and a copy of those requirements are actually included within the applicant's application, which is before you this evening. I think it's also important to note that oftentimes we talk about economic development incentives, and typically, the trigger for those incentives is new job creation or capital investment. That is not the intent of the Chapter 353 program by state statute. Chapter 353 is implicitly a blight removal tool. In other way, in other words, it's not to create jobs, it's not to create capital investment, it's to make things look better than they do today. To put that in a nutshell, in real plain English, that's what the intent of this program is for. The applicant's unable to be here this evening, she wanted to, she has another prior commitment, but she will be here for the second reading, which will be in two weeks. In lieu of her being here, Steve Gunther, who's her architect, is here if you have particular questions about the specific project. On the second page of the RBA before you is the, is basically a schedule or a chart showing how the taxing jurisdictions will be impacted. Over the 10-year life of this particular project, roughly $38,700 of taxes would be forgiven cumulative over that 10-year period. And again, there's a schedule showing exactly which taxing jurisdictions would be impacted, and the level of that impact. And with that, I would answer any questions that you may have.
Before we do that, I'm going to go back and officially open the public hearing at this time, and ask the commissioners if they have any ex parte communication they'd like to share on this matter. I know some of us are members of the commission itself, Pat.
As I am, and I was here for the hearing, and the same thing's here tonight, so it's all going into the final decision, but we did obviously fast move that. That being said, I'll listen to another public commentator here before I can make a final decision.
And as the Chair of that commission, I've been briefed by staff regarding it as well. Ms. Nelson?
I also attended the Raytown Municipal Redevelopment Corporation meeting, and was given all the information, and will make my determination based on the facts presented.
Alright, thank you again, Tom, for that. We'll ask the applicant, Representative, Mr. Gunther, would you like to discuss this with us, sir?
Steve Gunther, 11705 East 71st Court here in Raytown. As the project architect, I had talked with Sue many years ago about possibly doing a second-floor addition to her facility, and opened it up for additional office space, so we generated, you know, an elevation and everything for it. The actual cost for doing that was beyond what she was wanting to spend on the facility, but then she liked the elevation well enough that she wanted to go forward with that, so that's how this project actually came to be, as far as, you know, the improvement to the front facade. So, I don't know exactly what her final numbers came out to be for cost, but I'm here to answer any questions as far as the architecture or whatever. Pretty much resembles that of a downtown second-floor addition, so.
Mr. Van Busker?
I believe I saw, is Sue Frank the general contractor for this?
Yes, she's acting as her own general contractor. And that, and she did that when she remodeled the interior of her office, too. She's more than capable.
That's, that's the only question I have for you.
Mr. Lightfoot?
My question more for Tom, uh, regarding the 353 and the blight, and the way that's described, so, the blanket light statement, does, does that extend like to, where Wendy's, you know, like the Wendy's did, three did theirs, did they use the 353?
Wendy's did not. Um, they actually inquired about it, but they were on a, a fast track that, although typically our process from the time we receive it to the time it goes through RMRC, the tax impact analysis ultimately comes before this body for, for two votes, typically, we'd, we'd like to keep that about a six-week period from the time we receive it to the time that you vote the second time. Uh, Wendy's wasn't, their, their timeframe didn't, uh, didn't match that, they were just ready to go. They had a plan and they were ready to go, so they forewent, uh, any opportunity to participate.
Thank you.
Ms. Nelson?
Steve, can you explain a little bit about what's gonna be happening to the facade? As you stated that, um, there's not gonna be a second floor to it, but it's more a taller facade that's gonna be covering, so you don't have visual sight of the air conditioner and different things like that?
Well, you don't see the air conditioning unit, or the condensing unit from the, uh, front facade, you do see it from the back, so there is, uh, a facade improvement on the back also. Uh, but on the front, uh, the front little canopy, mansard canopy's coming off, that's all gonna get cleaned up, the brick's gonna be extended to a certain point, and then from there, uh, there's a, um, a banding that goes around the front, and, uh, that changes the brick to, uh, a stucco ephesus type material, uh, and it follows that up to the cornice area.
Okay, so basically, what's being put up is a kind of a cornice at the top, it looks like there's windows, kind of a, kind of an imaginary second story?
Right, correct, and you see that a lot in a lot of different developments, you go out to Summit Fair or something like that, a lot of their buildings will look two stories tall even though they're only a single story.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Walker?
How tall was it, Steve?
You know what, I didn't, I don't have that information directly in front of me, but I think it's somewhere around 22 to 25 feet all total.
Anything to cover up here, condensing unit, or...
Yeah, it's, it's getting screened by the, uh, rear facade screen, yeah, and that's where she's gonna put her, uh, logo and everything on the rear of the facade, the north facade.
So if you're looking at it straight on, from the front or back, you don't see the air conditioner?
That's correct.
From the south, or the intersection, you see it?
No, you, actually, we, um, we designed the facade on the east side of the facility to where if you were in a car at the intersection of 63rd and Blue Ridge cutoff, approaching, or going westbound on 63rd Street, the facade would actually look like it continues, continues all the way back also. You might get a glimpse of it, um, if you looked really quick coming down Blue Ridge Boulevard going to the south, um, but again, that would be the only possible location, and when I drove by there, uh, that, the screen actually wraps around a little bit and ties into a, um, a dividing wall between, uh, the units there anyway, and it pretty much shields, uh, anything that you would see there. And then on the west side, you can't see it at all because the, the, the building step up as they go to the west.
So are you raising the, the facade on both the, the north, east, and south sides?
On the, on, well, uh, on the east side for a certain distance, yeah. I, I'm not sure what, I think that distance was either 20 or 24 feet, it goes back.
You don't have any illustrations of what you're actually doing?
No, I didn't have time to prepare all that when she called me and said, would I come up?
Mr. Ertz?
Thank you, uh, my department, 353 question. The idea of the 353, as you said, was to remove the light from downtown, even if it, the owners of the building were the same owners for the last 50 years, and, you know, for whatever reason, we are trying to encourage them to put money back into their properties now, but it's obviously, if that's happened, otherwise it would not be a 353. Seems like a bit of a circle there. But several businesses, some do it and some have not, uh, I do appreciate, this one that just came to us before the work was done, I believe we even had these in arrears, which was a little bit harder to devote on in the past, I believe also, uh, loan apartments and did, did huge updates and did not ask for these, and so it goes back and forth. But if, if it gets downtown to look better, um, I'm not hearing any problems with that. I'm considering taxing entities here and complaining, this seems to be a lot of making decisions tonight, but I hope for that. Plus encouraging to let people know, uh, we, we list out to, do all the businesses that are in the 353 zone know? They are, and just know, or how is that reviewed?
Well, I, I know the businesses that the Raytown Main Street has contacted in the past all do know about it, yes, and we've pretty much contacted every business in the downtown area.
Well, that's part of my question, too, Tom, or, or Steve, you know that, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit surprised we haven't heard from the Raytown School District, who is gonna lose $23,000 potentially out of this. Fire District loses almost $3,800 out of this, and, and we've heard nothing from those entities who oftentimes do complain about these taxes.
In, in fact, the letters to the chat taxing jurisdictions, I believe, are at the back of your packet, uh, they may actually be the very last thing in your packet, yes they are. Um, they went out each of the taxing jurisdictions that'll be impacted, the only one that I've heard from was the school district, and Dr. Markley just had some simple questions, and I encouraged him to contact the applicant, uh, to take that conversation further if, if he desired to do so. Uh, aside from that conversation, I really haven't, uh, haven't had anything.
Because I, I recall at one of our last meetings with this commission, we actually had an applicant come forward, and once that applicant became aware of the jurisdictions and the amount of money that was gonna be taken out of the school district's hands for the children of our school district, the application was withdrawn.
Correct.
So, uh, again, I'm surprised that, uh, we haven't heard anything or any action from the school district, but again, we first reading on this stuff. Mr. Van Buisker?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cole, is the, uh, does the abatement start after all the improvements are completed?
Absolutely.
And what, and what timeframe is there for the improvements to be completed?
Um, the, the timeframe for them, for them to, to be completed, I don't recall exactly what the statute says, although this project would start almost immediately, as soon as there's enough, enough positive weather days for them to go. Uh, so I, I think this project, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, in...
Two months, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So, but, but by summer at the absolute latest, this project should be complete.
I, I agree with the mayor, I'm a little surprised that some of these entities didn't come tonight and protest, especially, especially the school district. I remember they did when we, uh, 353 tax abatement was there for Center 63. On the other hand, they're not real consistent, they didn't show up when, uh, the, we were talking about placing a neighborhood market here that would have been huge for the school district, so, uh, we didn't hear anything out of them then. It's true that our downtown area is a, apparently a blighted area, or considered that, and, you know, with that economic development we could have had here a couple of years ago, I think it would have, might have eliminated a lot of that, and we had the potential of it, but unfortunately, we didn't, so we still have the same issue that we've had now for a lot of years. When I moved to this community, that area was not a blighted area at all, it was thriving. And, uh, it's unfortunate that's became, you know, what it is, uh, I, I sure hope that we can do something to spark economic development in that area so we don't continue to have, businesses are just struggling to get by and, and try to, try to make their businesses look a little bit better, and, uh, when we really don't have, uh, that much traffic there, unfortunately. I, uh... I guess, uh... What, what did you say exactly on the time period?
I, I think they'll be, I think they'll be done by, by June at the latest, probably.
By, probably by when?
June.
Is that just a probably, or...
Steve, Steve says two months, I'm, I'm giving him a few extra months for horrendous weather there, too, so.
I mean, depending on when they get started, it should only take a couple of months to do, I mean, it's some minor facade improvements.
Some additional, you know, the mayor mentioned, uh, the money being lost by the school district, certainly there's a substantial amount from the fire district, uh, from the county, from our city. Handicap workshop, mental health, junior college, library, the blind, you know, it all totals up to about $38,774 that, uh, will, will not go to those entities, and, uh, so I'm a little surprised that there's no one here protesting that tonight, but...
Well, I think you also have to look, too, after that 10-year period, there's gonna be a higher assessment on that property, and those taxes that are lost are gonna be gained back, so, I mean, you gotta really look at this at both ends, not just at the front end. I mean, in the future, you will be gaining tax revenue from this. If they don't do anything at all, you'll just continually lose tax revenue.
I think that's quite an assumption, that we'll be gaining tax revenue after 10 years, but, uh, I hope you're right. In any case, uh, I know that we do have this, uh, available to businesses, and, uh, so, uh, certainly it's their prerogative to, to use it whenever they feel the necessity to, to do so. I'm, I'm curious, uh, Raytown Plaza, were there any tax incentives asked for there?
Not on that project, no.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And they were, they were available, they did not choose to use them. Mr. Kramer?
You had mentioned that, um, the blight study had been done, uh, approximately 2006. I was thinking it was around '02 or '03, maybe I'm wrong, and if you can get that information for me?
Okay.
But I, I, I think, uh, we're around the 10-year mark for tax abatement, uh, monies are, are available, um, for that area, and this will be the first for that area? Or, no, actually, Clark's Appliance?
Right, there, there've actually been, the, the boundaries of the, and, and these are rough boundaries, but they're, they're pretty close. Uh, if you go east to the post office, west to, um, let's, let's say Arlington, uh, north to 59th Street, and south, um, basically down to Railroad Street, I believe, and that's essentially, that's essentially the boundaries of, of, of the, the project area, or the 353 area.
Sure.
So, over the years, we've had Clark's Appliances, uh, Precision Electrical Sales, which is at, at 63rd and Evanston, um... Newsroom Cafe, which, again, they were provided the incentive, they're not complete with their construction, they're not open yet, so they haven't been able to actually receive that abatement yet. Once they complete their construction, then, then they're, they're ready to go. Uh, but yeah, we've had, uh, Benetti's, I believe, was one of the first 353 applicants and, and, and projects to receive it. Uh, Gary Canaby did a building, uh, on Raytown Road as well, so, we've had, we've had a handful over the years, again, not, you know, I, I think probably if we would count them all up, we'd have maybe seven or maybe eight of them. Uh, so, this hasn't been a program that's attracted, you know, the interest of, of everybody in the downtown.
Okay, but yeah, if you could get that information, I was thinking that, that blight study was around '02?
And it may, and it may be, it very well may be.
Yeah, a considerable amount of time ago. Uh, that's really all I've got in, in regards to, um, uh, regaining lost taxes, you don't regain what you lost, but, um, that's all I have.
Mr. Cole, as I understand it, the project costs are estimated to be $35,000?
Mm-hmm.
But yet we're, we're gonna abate taxes of close to $39,000. Now, how does the math work on that? How do you get more?
That's, that's the way that, that's the way that state statute designs this particular program, where what is abated, if you look at a, a real property tax bill, it's essentially in two segments. A lot of folks don't recognize the two segments, but there are two segments. One being the ground value, the physical ground that you can go dig in, the other, if you will, would be, if you can imagine, a, a floating building, and that's the other portion of that tax bill. The way that this program's set up by state statute is that for the period of, of the abatement, the 10 years in this particular case, the value of that floating building goes down to zero. The applicant will continue to pay taxes on the dirt, on the ground that's there, and in this case, where $36, $3800 a year is abated for that building, uh, the applicant will still probably pay, I'd assume, probably $500 to $800 a year for the taxes on that ground. So, that's really the way that, that, that incentive works. So if you strip off that entire building, abate the entire taxes to be generated by that building for that 10-year period, it does, in this case, it exceeds the amount of construction. What's not included in this is that the applicant, I believe last summer, perhaps the summer before, completed an interior remodel of her building that stretched somewhere around about $100,000 off, and that's not included in this application, but it's certainly work that's, that's gone on, on this particular site. The threshold for this level of, of the abatement is $25,000, um, which she exceeds by, by 10 grand or so, and maybe more.
All right, Ms. Emerson?
This is our main street, and it has not really been what you would call outstanding, and I think if one person starts working on it, that the others will, will also want to, to have a, a nice front on their building, and I think it will help us immensely.
And that, that's certainly the intent, to, to drive that, that, uh, to encourage that to happen, so.
And again, I, I don't think I, I mentioned this, Mr. Benson reminded me a, a moment ago, that whoever receives this incentive is also subject to the Central Business District design standards, so they have to live up to a standard that's already put in place by our planning department, um, so it's, I, I know some questions were asked of Steve about facade types and whatnot, all that has to, has to meet our requirements.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, um, I, I just wanted to say, if, uh, if downtown streetscape ever gets done, uh, I would really like good-looking buildings to go with it, so I would encourage uh, anybody in the downtown area to, uh, possibly pursue the 353 tax payment, if at all possible, because I know when we get streetscape done, we want beautiful buildings there, so, yeah.
Mr. Kramer?
Another question popped into my head, because there's a $25,000 threshold, do we track grocery receipts in situations like this, do they have to turn any paperwork over, or...
Um, yeah, yes, uh, she has submitted, and I believe it's actually in your packet, uh, the bids that she's received thus far for the, for the exterior work. Um, and, and at, at that, at this point, that's, that's really what we've got. As far as gross receipts for, like, the income of the business, absolutely not.
No, I'm, I'm talking project costs?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, that's all, that's all submitted, yes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Van Buisker?
So, if a project is partially completed, then what happens?
Zero.
Has to be took?
Right.
So, okay, now since you're, since you're before, sorry Steve, uh, the one you had for your property, is that still in effect since that building collapsed, or what's...
Yeah, we, we're not receiving any abatement on that property.
That's, that's what would be my assumption.
Right.
Okay, and so that's what happens if, in a situation like that. Well, let's hope, let's hope Ms., Ms. Frank's, uh, building doesn't collapse, but...
Well, that shouldn't be an issue there.
Okay.
You're right, it shouldn't be.
Thank you.
Ms. Emerson? All right. Mr. Ager?
Tom, do we have any, uh, downtown design requirement?
Yes, we have central bit, uh, the CBD design standards, uh, which dictate basically exterior materials and, and signage and whatnot, uh, and that's all, uh, required and applicable for each of these, uh, applications.
Are, are they going to require, in the future, uh, that these buildings should look generally alike, or that it would be random?
There comes Mr. Benson. I believe they all have to have similar character and similar materials and, and whatnot.
They don't have to look alike, but there are, the design standards call for exterior materials, brick, stone, stucco, um, glass, um, they're more durable materials, wood, uh, metal are, are allowed, but not as a primary material, only as a secondary or tertiary material. Um, so, deflect, there's flexibility in the design, the actual appearance and design of the buildings, but the materials, um, are, are specified in design standards, and then the screening, like, questions about the rooftop mechanical equipment screening, venting, things like that are addressed as well.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go to public comment now, I'll, I'll come back to you, to you All right, I'm going to go to public comment now. I'll come back to you two of you that are still wanting to ask. I want to move this forward. So, would anyone in the audience like to address this board regarding this specific matter at this time? Okay, we have cleared that hurdle. All right, we'll go back to board discussion, and I remind you, this is the first vote on this. So, any motion to carry it forward would be requested to move it to a date certain of February 3rd, should that be your desire. All right, board discussion, we'll go to Mr. Van Busker.
I make a motion that we move this forward to a date certain of our next Board of Alderman meeting. I'm not sure what that date would be.
It'd be February 3rd, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Melson has a second on that. End of discussion still. Mr. Green?
Just a quick comment. I just want to say, Mr. Benson, I remember you bringing that, you don't need to get up, just, I remember you bringing that up during the Family Dollar Conversation about downtown design centers. I appreciate the information again, really do. Thank you.
We absolutely have design guidelines.
That's right, we do.
Mr. Ertz?
Now, having heard the applicant's bring this forward, having seen that the community, which I guess we have one more reading to hear, I just want to encourage the Main Street Association to get out and maybe promote us to other businesses down there, so we can get more Main Street like this. Thank you.
No further discussion? All right, call the vote to move this to a date certain of February 3rd.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azure?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Whitefoot?
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Melson, you are certainly the most deserved one to ask for adjournment at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Ertz, to adjourn this meeting at this time. All in favor signify by saying aye. All those that want to stay longer, motion passes to adjourn.